... please rise. For the pledge.
He just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction of members.
Stephen Galli from Millville.
Mike Buckley from Blackstone.
Brian Faulkner, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Erin Vinoco, Millville.
Dr. Perry Davis, Superintendent of Schools.
I'm Bill Chaplin, Blackstone. So we will go open up with public forum? Not yet, okay, alright. Consent Agenda A, we have some warrants to review and looking for motions at Millville.
Just the warrants.
Just the warrants.
So move down, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Both of you have a vote, Buckley, second to Ms. Vinoco.
Thanks.
Any discussion? All in favor, someone say an aye.
Aye.
I have a question. Who seconded that?
Wendy.
Yes.
Move to report of the superintendent.
Good evening, members of the committee again. Tonight, we are going to continue to look at the FY15 budget presentations and this evening we have, this is Carol Brown, the principal of JFKFM Elementary Schools in Blackstone, and Ms. Vashia Desai, the principal of the Millville Elementary School. I'll be joining them at the table. They're here to give you an overview and a presentation. We am developing this budget. I had the two elementary principals work together, so even though they are separate budgets, they're going to kind of give an overview as leaders of your elementary schools because there are some common areas that they're working on and I think it's important for you to hear the vision and kind of see that. And then the backup information as we did before. So I will join Mrs. Brown and Mrs. Desai and take questions. I just wanted to make note, Mrs. Smart is not here tonight due minutes, so I'll be jotting some minutes down for the record. Okay?
Welcome.
Steve. I think everybody knows Carol Brown and Ms. Desai. While the committee is here, I just want to do say a few words because the roof project is 99% finished to great relief to the faculty and staff, but no one more happier than Carol Brown. That's why she's smiling a little bit because we have certainly lived a roof project in many, 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 many meetings and disruptions in coordination. So I just want to commend Mrs. Brown for all of that work on the roof project, but it has finally come to somewhat closure at this point. Again, for the committee and the audience at home, the presentation tonight is really about conceptually what are we committed to for the elementary level education in the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. There are many things that the schools do together and particularly you're going to hear discussion about professional development, our literacy program, and the impact that has not only on the faculty and staff, but also on the students as we talk about how we're moving forward with that implementation. Again, you had in your packets and it was sent to you electronically, you do have the line item budgets. Again, I want to just reiterate that in the line item budgets, past practice in some accounts, you would get the impression that nothing was spent for a year. There would be zero expense. That's not to suggest that things weren't happening in those accounts, however, sometimes they were bought ahead and so therefore there's in some line items, a very scattered history of expense. I've directed the principals to establish based on what are the learning needs of the students to put money in. Now, that is easy to put in, but later we will be having much more detailed discussions about just how much we can afford and be going back and looking at it. But when you've looked at those budgets, again, just call it to your attention, you know, when you see some gaps particularly in fiscal 13 or even in fiscal 14, but I've asked the principals to develop numbers based on the learning needs of the children and what do we need instructionally in the buildings. So with that, I will turn it over to Carol Brown and then she has a PowerPoint that will be up on the screen. Carol?
Thank you. Mrs. Desai and I prepared a brief PowerPoint for you. We included the mission and vision for the district. We know how important this is to our future and in order for it to be something that we live every day, it needs to be visible and it just needs to be part of our thinking as well as the core values. So what we would like to do is just talk briefly about our current literacy and where we're at now.
Okay. So as you know, we launched the literacy initiative this year in both elementary schools and for the younger grade levels from kindergarten to grade two, they launched with the foundations program. Teachers had some professional development over the summer. They have ongoing workshops during the school year with the foundations and then the, you're going to talk more in detail about Teachers for Teachers. So lead you into that.
So again, we had consultants from Teachers for Teachers for grades three through five and we had a great deal and it's still ongoing professional development that occurred during our professional development days as well as days embedded throughout the school year. Particularly, we're looking at training for the Benchmark Assessment System by Fountas and Pennell, but also looking at Reader's Workshop. How do we teach reading and what does that mean? What does that mean as educators, but also what does that mean to our students? And Mrs. Desai and I have had the opportunity to meet on various occasions with the consultants and I'd like to give you a little bit of a flavor as to what this professional development looks like for teachers. So again, they've really been spending a significant amount of time taking a look at the Benchmark Assessment Program, how to administer it, but most importantly, what does that information tell them with regard to their students and what are their areas of strength? What are their areas of need? So we're really honing in on that, which then informs instruction. As part of the professional development, the consultants are providing for us units of study and the concepts that are taught within those units and they're aligned to the common core and all of the standards are identified. We're also finding the need to really develop, to further develop bookrooms. We know that we're lacking in books for students. We have to immerse them in reading. Most importantly, we have to immerse them in reading books that they can read and...
Of interest.
Of interest is so there are a lot of different reasons why people read and I think I probably touched upon that when we were here last. So there's a lot of conversation about why do you read? And in talking with the consultants, we realize that we are going to need to take a look at creating or improving upon our reading workrooms, meaning we're going to have bins of books at certain levels. Books can be divided up by reading level, by genre, by series, and there have to be books of multiple titles. So the idea is that a student reads a book that is appropriate and moves on to another book within that level. And the idea is initially you begin with the instruction and the reading of more prompting and support, if you will, by the teacher, moving the student to a more independent level, but most importantly, what we want to achieve is the secure application. So in other words, that students know how to choose a book, are successful in reading the book, thinking about what they're reading. So it's more than just sitting and reading a book and clearly we want to encourage reading for enjoyment. That is so very important, but also getting students to think about what they're reading, what is the author's purpose, the intent, the inferential reasoning. So there are many facets to why a student reads and how a student reads. So we're very excited to be having the opportunity to continue with this professional development and the commitment to that. We are off to a wonderful start and we know we have some more work to do in that area.
So Mrs. Brown and I, I think it's the next slide.
If you don't mind. Sorry.
That's okay. We created our vision of the elementary school and we coordinated efforts because we've worked really hard all this year and even last year of having the similar consistent approaches in both buildings. Yes, each building has its own flavor, so to speak, yet the way we present our academics and how we go through our curriculum should have a similar vision that guides us. So the vision, and this is a starting point, I want you to know that as well because we also want to take this and refine it as time goes on. So our vision for the Blackstone Millville Regional School District elementary students is to facilitate critical thinking skills in order to build a strong foundation of literacy and mathematical concepts. Our goal is to maximize academic performance, the research-based instructional techniques in a safe and respectful environment. And as we reflected on this and we think of our walkthroughs or when we pop in and see the teachers, I have some interesting things and I'm more of the math-science person. So I'll share the math piece. When I walked into kindergarten classroom and the students were not only using appropriate mathematical terms for shapes beyond triangle, they were talking about rhombus and a hexagon and they were trading in their triangles to make a rhombus or a hexagon. This is kindergarten and they were using these terms fluidly, they understood the concepts of how you make the new shape and different properties of that shape. The underlying math concept was not just identify the shape, but what properties does the new shape have? How many sides? What kind of edges does it have and so on and so forth? And I saw that in kindergarten. Then I went and I have a story about first grade where we've all seen the manipulatives is what we call them. The flats are the big square pieces, the longs are, look like sticks, and then the cube. And the teacher was working on two-digit numerical concepts and before you would just say, oh, what makes 10 or 11 and you'd show them a number and maybe count different objects. In this case, they realized I could have 11 cubes, I can trade them in for a long and one cube and the number 11. So the long represents the tens place value, the cube represents the ones place value and the flat represents the hundreds place value, yet no one talked about place value because they're still constructing those ideas at that level. And then as you go into the upper grades, I observed a lesson where children had to plot points on a graph to make a line, but from that, and here's where the challenge came because you have to have a strong foundation, they have to understand, well, what's the formula? What am I going to do to plot the next dot? I didn't give it to you. What do you think it will be? And the children are working in partnerships and they're having these rich discussions because that's part of what we talk about in 21st century learning is you're not just sitting by yourself at a desk facing forward. People are talking, their children are talking back and forth and questioning each other, well, what do you think this and I think this and they're defending their ideas and then they're changing and they're building that baseline of understanding and getting deeper knowledge and then they come to agreement. When we go off and work years down the road, this is what you have to do at work. You have to have discussions and you go back and forth and you refine and refine and refine and come to agreement. And I saw that happening in a math class. So just to give you an idea of how that vision works from elementary school.
And moving on to foundations, you know, it used to be that phonics instructions involved a workbook with a teacher-directed lesson initially and some interaction between teacher and students and then for practice, students would go to the workbook and write. And it was about as quiet as this. If you think about it, letters have sounds. In order to learn more and really understand the sounds that letters make, you need kids actively engaged, you need to hear them talking, you need to hear them making the sounds of the letters. So as you walk through the hallways now, you'll hear them reciting the alphabet. A, apple, app. And it doesn't matter what classroom you go to, you hear the kids engaged and knowing what sounds letters make. And we're really talking about building a foundation, a strong foundation, because as students move through the grade levels, if you don't have that foundation, reading is going to be challenging for you and that will, that will impact you in every aspect, in every, every area of the curriculum. So now you actually see students engaged with each other. I was in a kindergarten classroom just last week and a student got up and facilitated part of the lesson and it was, and the teacher just sat back and it was the most amazing thing to see. The kids were engaged, the student who was leading the lesson was proud and was very successful. I mean, this is something that they do and it seems rote, but it's really, really deeply ingrained. Some of these skills are already ingrained with these kids. We're seeing some very initial successes and also in administering the unit tests for foundations, we are really able to identify those students who are showing that they're having some difficulties. So they're identified early and we are able to give extra support for their phonics. And also prior to this, I have to say that that extra support oftentimes didn't look quite like what was going on in the classroom. Now we're using the same program so that the students are hearing the same language, the approach is the same, and we're really seeing some great success. And I have to tell you that to see the excitement and the level of engagement from the students is outstanding. So I'm very, very pleased with what we're seeing so far and teachers are as well. And they are actually, there are four professional development days for teachers for foundations. We've just completed our two, we have two more to go, so it's going, going very well. I'd also like to share a story about something that I saw in a fourth grade classroom. It was truly a co-taught lesson between a special educator and a general educator during reading, which was wonderful to see. And there was much discussion about what does a good reader do? And it may not seem important that students understand that, but when you understand what you're doing and why you're doing it, it adds so much more value. And there were a lot of interactions between students. They were doing turn and talks, they were talking about what their responsibility was as a reader, but they also were talking about what were the teachers' responsibilities as they taught them. And it was a true partnership almost between student and teacher that I, it was really wonderful to see. So the level of engagement, again, I've just seen really increase this year in both programs. So it just, it just, it just solidified for me the necessity to continue and move forward with this commitment for literacy.
It'll be interesting to see what the data looks like in two years or in three years when that, when that first class goes through the initial MCAS. It'll be really interesting.
Yeah, we're quite anxious to see next year as the students who have had foundations, every day for 45 minutes as they move to the next grade level. It would be very interesting to see and I predict that we're really going to see just a positive impact.
I've already had teachers say, these students are going to go into the next year's class even better prepared.
That much hip, sure.
So already the teachers are seeing the benefit of this and how wonderful, I mean, because we're seeing similar things in my building, everybody's excited, but also thinking, wow, they're coming in strong for the next year. And so that, you're right, it would be nice to see the long-term projections.
Have you seen the dynamics between the grades with the teachers mostly? Has that changed? Has that been improved? I mean, because they were teaching differently, they were using different approaches in the past and now they're all on the same program. So how has that changed, would you say, every day between the teachers?
I would say that it has allowed conversations between grade levels using the same language and when you're talking about student growth, when you're talking about challenges for students, you're using the same information, the same tools. So when we're talking about how students perform, we're taking a look at those unit tests for foundations, we're using the same tool to measure and to identify need. So I just find that it's been, it's been a positive. And one of the things that we've done with the foundations professional development is we've combined grade levels. So we actually have, there have been, the first session we had, I think it was kindergarten and first grade together for professional development, second grade by themselves in the afternoon, but then we recently switched it. So we're getting more dialogue between teachers at various grade levels and so they're really talking about what's going on in their classroom. You know, they're having questions and I think it's benefited teachers as well, absolutely.
And you have that thread of consistency, so when they go off for special education, the special education teachers can now fine tune, yet you're using a very familiar routine for the students. And that is key because before, when the special ed teachers worked, they might have used different tools to get to the same concept, but I think here in this case, it's something that's already familiar with the student. So they do not have to step back and spend extra time re-teaching or refocusing. With the upper level grades, there's been a lot of discussion about the excitement of we're developing these book, you know, book bags for the students to be able to finally go and pick within their range of reading and interest level. What we want to build is like also build into different genres and expand into that. And I see teachers are getting very excited about that because you're broadening the horizon, you're getting into a variety of different ways. So there's more collaboration there as well with the older students. I think there's just a richer way of approaching things.
Are we using the library as a resource to help support the program as well?
Well, actually, we just talked about this in more detail today with one of the consultants. We're actually going to be going into our libraries and identifying books that we can use as part of that reading room. You know, a library is something where the students go and there's no real guidance or instruction, if you will, as to really hone in on books that are appropriate for them. So I think that part of what students will be able to use is, remember when I talked about that secure application piece prior? Now, once that becomes truly ingrained in them, they can go to the library and look at books through a whole different set of eyes and not just picking any book off the shelf. But we're also really going to take a look at what do we have on the shelves in the library? What can we utilize to sort of support and use for our book bins? So I think we're in the early stages of that, but that's certainly a step that we need to take because we've got a lot of resources there.
What does the funding look like for that? Is that in, is that in this budget in terms of those specific genres and books and whatnot? Does that continue to be in the...
The actual professional development, the consultants, that's in the PD budget.
Yep.
But in this budget, they built in some money for instructional materials.
Right.
Either line items, you know, 2,300, 2,400 to speak to instructional materials or textbooks. And I think it's important, we're seeing fewer workbooks.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And it's also important to note that we're not going to go out and purchase books. I mean, there's going to be thought and planning behind it because again, this is just not something, well, we have the money, so let's just buy. That's why when we met with the consultant today, we asked for some guidance and really have a better understanding of what we have, what we can use, and what do we need.
And then take what the consultants will give us some sampling of what you should have and we're going to take that back with the teachers, assess what we have in the buildings because in Millville, we have that bookroom and reading specialist has been working with me to reorganize it according to bins that are different selections within a range of reading. So teachers can use those materials to check out, but if there's some outdated materials or things that are, there are gaps, the teachers will work with us as well because they'll be able to quickly identify that of where we need.
Chairman. Now, how often do they, how often does a child get, whether it's library period or time in the library? Is it once every other week or...
Every other week.
Every other week.
Every other week. So can you just describe for the committee like what the, maybe the specials are or how that rotates? You know what I mean? Obviously, they're filling in for preps, so it's library and gym and...
It's library and technology.
Okay, you're opposite.
So that alternates every other week. And then we have our music.
Music is every week.
And art.
Art and reading is every other week.
Art and reading.
Okay.
And then there's reading every week.
Right.
And there's reading every week. So actually, so a child is going to get, in a 10-day period, he's going to get three reading instruction.
In a 10-day period...
In other words, like two weeks, right? So in other words, the reading hits every week and the, and the one, the opposite, the odd. Now, what is that? Is that to, is that to supplement the reading instruction in the class or is that in addition to? What kind of things are we doing in that area, in those reading pullouts?
During that reading time? Well, they are focusing on the standards. Oftentimes, they'll plan with teachers and if teachers are doing poetry at that time, they will do poetry. You know, at the higher levels, we're looking at MCAS in the areas, you know, that we know that we need to provide some extra support in instruction and practice, nonfiction, author's purpose. So it depends on the grade level.
And the reading specialists are also going through the Teachers for Teachers training.
Okay.
Okay. So they also have the same background and they coordinate efforts with the regular classroom teacher. So I recently observed a lesson where the classroom teacher launched a unit and the students had read a book and the reading teacher picked up in her lesson and went deeper with it and then they were going to go back to the classroom teacher and continue with the lesson. That was one example. This is just in the beginning phases where they're able to coordinate. Obviously, the reading specialist is seeing children throughout the building, so she's picking and choosing of how, what time she collaborates what to go deeper.
Okay, so now you're talking about, how many reading specialists are in Millville and how many are in the complex?
One at Millville.
You have one full-time?
Yes.
You count?
Well, I actually have one in Maloney and then I have one in Kennedy, but I also have a Title I teacher for kindergarten.
For kindergarten. And is that half-time or is that...
She's half-time.
Half-time.
Yes.
Okay.
Just to point out, the Title I, we don't have Title I in Millville.
Right.
Because it's targeted by school and the limited funds are spent in Blackstone.
The complexes and so it says, yeah. Following up on that, now what happens to the child that like has been maybe is ahead of the game? Is kind of like, you know, has, you know, I'm sure you probably have some kindergartners and first graders who probably are reading at above level. So what about those kids? How do we challenge them? How do we make that happen in that space?
That's really something that's addressed in the classroom and I'll be the first to tell you that when we take a look at students' performance, you know, sometimes we tend to focus on those students who are struggling. And, you know, we sort of use our reading teachers to pull some of those students and we call it supportive reading. We don't have anything formally, no formal schedule for those students who are showing that they need to be enriched. It's really done in the classroom. I have actually been in a kindergarten classroom where a kindergarten student read a book, I mean, which was amazing, but I guess I would be the first to tell you that we need to do a far better job and when we look at our long-range planning, we've got to figure out how to meet the needs of those students.
Absolutely, because I think that's imperative to keep children engaged and you don't lose that as well as if a child is being challenged, you know, the parent may be thinking about other alternatives to the fine public education system in the two towns. So that's why I would just bring that up, that, you know, how do you address that?
Yeah, if I could add, in the teaching of reading, some children at an early age have wonderful visual memory and they learn sight words, but they don't necessarily have the word attack skills that we're teaching in foundations. And that's important, you know, if you've ever had a young child, you read a book to them 10 or 15 times and daddy, you skipped a page because they know the words, but they really aren't reading it. It's kind of their sight vocabulary. So it's really essential when you introduce a program like foundations, that you want to ensure that every student has achieved, you know, this level of understanding because that's what's going to help them when they, when they have to use those word attack skills to move to vocabulary that they don't have the opportunity to learn. So I think the enrichment, sometimes we want to make sure that we have a foundational program for all children that they go through it. And again, some children can have mastery of that at a higher level than other children, but these exercises that I've observed in K-1 particularly, all children enjoy them and it is a foundational skill that's really essential to success. And it does, it is a foundational skill that's really essential to successful readers in the future, so.
Yeah, and, and Dr. Davis is, is right, because part of the Foundations program is something called trick words. So it's just really a group of letters that does not form a word, a real word. But knowing the sounds of the letters and the rules that they're learning, they can tap out that, that word. So that's truly what shows. Are they, are they understanding what the rules are? Are they understanding how the combinations of letters make certain sounds and then apply that knowledge?
It's fascinating, I, I observed a first grade class, to have a first grader talk about a diphthong. All right, as an, as an phonemic awareness and understand what it is. Consonant vowels and consonants mean something. That is a foundational skill, all right, that, that people need in order to use for all of their future endeavors in terms of pronouncing words. So it's, it's really, I found that fascinating, when, when students in first grade can actually identify those and use the vocabulary to tell me what it is. I didn't get that term until I was in graduate school, so quite frankly.
First grade.
It's a big step forward.
I, I think that when we talk about though challenging and enriching students, we also have to take a look at the differentiation of, of the teaching and the lesson. I had a conversation with a kindergarten teacher tonight, actually, before I came, and she was talking about, there's, there's a tray that has the, the letters of the alphabet printed on. And one of the activities is you take all of the magnetic letters off, and you're supposed to put the letters back on. And that's what the directions in the manual says. Well, so the teacher said to me, well, I don't have them, put them back in alphabetical order. And we were talking about, if a child picks up a V and knows immediately to go to the end of the alphabet, that's, that's pretty valuable information for us. Also, another way to differentiate is to take a magnetic board with no letters on it all, then take the, the letter tiles and put them in order. So there are ways to challenge, they're doing the same activity, but to challenge them in a different way. So the differentiation i- is, is a big piece, I think.
As long as you, sorry, as long as you're talking about intervention and differentiation, how about RTI? Have you talked about playing that in any way? Buildings?
Currently, what we have is, it's called supportive reading, where students are pulled. So that's a form of RTI that happens at kindergarten with our, our Title I person. And our literacy teachers, our reading teachers do that supportive reading piece. What we are doing as we move forward is we're, we're thinking about next year. And, you know, I always say that, that a schedule and the way we make a schedule should not drive instruction. It's got to be the other way around. What is it that we need to do? And then how do we make, then we make our schedule. The need is what drives the schedule. So we're, we're talking about, and we haven't had this, but working with the schedule to actually have a designated RTI period. So we're looking at that, at the complex, I've actually put together a, a, a grade level representative, and we're going to be meeting next Friday for the first time to talk about what are the needs at each grade level? Because we want to make sure that the schedule works, but, but part of that is, is making sure that we have that RTI time. And the hope is to be able to free everyone up in the building, so that it's sort of all hands on deck, if you will, so we can utilize, you know, the, 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 the knowledge and the expertise of all of our educators, whether you teach music or art or PE.
And, and in my building, it's a little bit easier, because I only have two sections. And so for the RTI piece, I'm, I leave it up at the team level. Yet what's happening is I'm noticing now, well, the occupational therapist is now able to come in and work with RTI with writing. There's sometimes at a risk of saying, the teachers are now talking with certain specialists. So you might talk to the art teacher and say, well, gee, we're working on this in math class, and the art teacher is now designing lessons that will get into those visual spatial concepts with the shapes and things like that. But it's taught as an art lesson, so they're seeing another angle. So that's not really RTI, yet you're, you're seeing that collaboration between the teachers. No longer are you seeing people just in their classrooms doing their own thing. They're talking with each other, they're going beyond. There's lessons developed with the technology teacher and the regular ed teachers. So it's, it's going a variety of different ways. A music teacher creates lessons that reinforce certain math concepts with the tapping with the younger children, the one-to-one correspondence. So when you talk about ITI, yes, there's a lot of people coming into the classroom. Yet I like to also think that you're going to use the experts around you to reinforce and have children see. Because when I used to teach middle school, it used to drive me nuts when they'd walk into my science class and say, we don't do math in science, and we don't write in science. And I'm like, well, real world scientists do all those things, so it's not just this block. You need to see that skill set in a variety of different settings. But we do want to build into our schedules that RTI block and free up people so that you can have teams and modules like working together.
Yeah, we, we have RTI.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
We've been doing that in our building for two years now. And I like, you know, we said all hands on deck. We have our phys ed instructor, the art, the music, all of them, the librarian, our literacy coaches. Truly speech, all hands on deck with, you know, the enrichment group, tier one, two, three. And we, obviously, we, we don't really give the, the neediest group the tier three. We don't have the phys ed instructor with our group. But yeah, all hands on deck. And, you know, some of the groups are thirty, and some of the groups are six. And that's the way it should be. And it's all differentiated, but yeah, I'm glad you're thinking about that.
Well, you know, we, we've had a lot of conversations, and some teachers will say, well, I've got my whole class sitting in front of me. And, and so how, how does RTI look any different than when I differentiate throughout the day? Good argument.
Yeah.
You know? So we do have OT, RTI in kindergarten, which is vital. You know, we have grade levels who, who are, are switching and grouping students accordingly. But I think that we just really need to be, and I applaud them for doing that. It's, it's a lot of planning, takes a lot of time. But, but I'm seeing that happening in the upper grade levels. So I really think we, we just, again, need to be more thoughtful. I keep going back to the need to plan and, and, and to make that commitment and just, and work together to figure out how to make it work for the kids, so.
Good question. With last year's implementation of the Foundations, did everybody have a chance to be trained? Or is there still a second round of people needing to be trained for the Foundations?
Everyone went to an initial day-long workshop, and then everyone is participating in the four PD days throughout the year.
That's this year, first year.
This year, first year.
This year.
Just looking ahead, and for next year, are there any teachers that are willing to do professional development within the, within the school with their background of Foundations or already having had Foundations?
Train the trainer.
Train the trainer.
Train the trainer. You know, honestly, we, what we have found already is that teachers are meeting together, and we do have some teachers who had training prior, who are really sort of facilitating that. And, and they're really working well together and bouncing ideas off of each other. You know, it's a conversation, I, I think that, that the year's worth of training, I've talked to many teachers, and I believe that you have too, and it's, it's really, again, a very formulaic approach. So having that training is certainly very beneficial. And we're, we're going to be talking in a minute about where we think we need to be moving next.
With the lower grades.
Yeah, but I would say that at this point, the teachers, from what I'm hearing, the teachers are saying that the training that they're receiving is, is, is really fitting the need.
And we're seeing it too. There's a big consistency when you go from class to class to class. And so if you walk in during the Foundations block, I'm seeing this, that approach, I'm seeing it implemented in the proper sequence. So clearly, they're integrating it. So this is where we're moving towards.
One more question.
Sure.
Um, hearing the need for book closets, is there a plan, by any chance, to reach out to the parents organizations and have dialogue based on what they may have to offer to help with the initiative for the literacy? I, I know that some, some had some money and was wondering what, you know, they could do to help support that. I was just wondering if we were going to be?
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I think certainly having that initial conversation about what our vision is and where we're going, and then really fine tuning it and figuring out what it is we need. But, but yeah, I, that's my plan.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, is this me? Okay, sure. So, so looking ahead to next year, teachers in grades kindergarten through two will continue to implement the Foundations program. And, and our, our vision is to support teachers as they refine the literacy skills for the 2014, 2015 school year. What we mean by that is, again, that commitment to continue with the Teachers for Teachers for grades three through five. Again, I, I think that we've, we've made some great progress this year. We have a long way to go. But what we're also proposing is to have the Teachers for Teachers consultants come in and work with teachers in grades one and two, attending these year-long workshops. There would be two offered during professional development days that are scheduled, and then the embedded professional development days throughout the year. And, and so that would be their phase one, that would be their initial year, but then continuing with that phase two portion for grades three through five. And again, we talked earlier about the importance of, when you talk about student growth and when you talk about areas of challenge, it's important to use the same tool, to be talking about the same, you're using the same language and measuring them the same way. Because if you don't use the same tool, i- i- it's really, it's more challenging to talk about where are they at as readers. And again, the more consistency that we provide our students, the more ingrained this becomes and the more meaningful their learning. So we are proposing that we, we move forward with that. We've talked prior about really not having an assessment tool in, in kindergarten through grade two. I believe we had mentioned that last time we were here, and that was really very concerning, not only to us but to teachers. And, and so we felt that because students were being exposed to this during, you know, in, in grades three through five, it just, it makes so much sense when we talk about student learning and their need to use these research-based programs. We're seeing success, you know, early success this year. So I think that if we start early, and again, we really need to be looking at these younger years and building that foundation. And, and we think that this, this is really going to be able to, to address the needs that we have with our students.
And we left out kindergarten, because kindergarten's going to have a different initiative that's mandated from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. As part of a lot of workshops that we started going to last year, and also we attended one earlier this year, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is really focusing on kindergarten assessment. And they are, initially, there was talk of two different types of assessments, and they let districts choose which one they're going to implement. Starting next year, all cohorts have to use Teaching Strategies Gold as the assessment at the kindergarten level. So DESE will purchase the online assessments for next year. They will provide professional development for all the kindergarten teachers to learn how to use this assessment. And it does, it's a very thorough assessment. They go beyond literacy and mathematical skills. They look at social readiness, they look at physical skills. I'm talking about motor, language, science, and social studies, starting at kindergarten. And it's a very detailed, I've, I've, I've had the box sitting in my office, and I've been flipping through, looking at it. It's one of the most thorough, thorough, early childhood assessments I have come across. And I used to work in early intervention, doing a lot of assessing as an occupational therapist. So this is actually refreshing, and they're going to support the kindergarten teachers through workshops and getting them together. So I know there was talk of, the other format was called work sampling, but DESE took a stance and said, no, we're moving forward. Everybody who starts implementing from next year onwards is going to do Teaching Strategies Gold. It's a mandate, yet they're providing a lot of support with it. And it's a system that's just exciting, because you're going to have much more richer detail of our students and how they're progressing through kindergarten. This assessment will take care of it. So the first grade teachers will have a lot more information from the get-go than what even what we provide them now.
So what happens after first grade or at first grade? How do, how do you go back and assess them from first grade, second grade, to where they were at, at kindergarten level?
This is a thing we have to look at when we look at long range planning. Teaching Strategies Gold, from my understanding, has just rolled out a first grade assessment that's similar, yet not all districts have bought onto it. It's still new. We have to make a decision in conjunction with a curricular specialist. What are we going to use? A lot of schools use DIBBLES, or they use DOMA, or they use, there are a variety of assessments that are out, out there. We have not been able to move forward with that without having a specialist working with us and guiding us through that. So I, I don't have the answer for what happens in first grade, yet in literacy, we know we've got the strong foundation with Foundations, and those teachers are going to have the Teachers for Teachers training with the Fanta and Pennell Benchmark System as well. In math, the Think Math piece is now where people are comfortable with it. We're rolling through it and building those mathematical concepts. Yet I feel, I agree with you, we do need another objective assessment that's outside of your curricular assessments, if that makes sense. Because curricular assessments are driven by what you've taught. If you really want to see how children are progressing, you need to take an external view, and that's what the DIBBLES and DOMA and all those other assessments do. So that's a good question. It's just, I feel like at this, at this point, without a curricular person there to guide us, it's a difficult decision to make. We need that expertise.
So you say that kindergarten, that Teaching Standards Gold is mandated by the state, but then?
That's what they just told us at a conference.
When you hit first grade, it's, it's your choice essentially.
First grade is if districts want to purchase it. These assessments have taken years to develop. I went to some workshops last year, and they would love to take these assessments, from what I heard initially, is get them up through grade three. Yeah, but it's another assessment system, and I think districts have to look at, what is it assessed? Do some comparative analysis of what you're looking for, the assessment, and the time it takes. Because from my understanding of Teaching Strategies Gold, it's a year-long piece where they're going to have to collect data and enter it into the computer. How are we going to support the teachers with this? Because from listening to people at the conference, that seemed to be the biggest challenge of, I have to enter the, it's almost creating a new system of data entry and collecting it for the teachers. And it's going to be our jobs next year to support them with that, because it's, it's a learning curve. It's a change. But whether or not schools go beyond kindergarten, DESE has left it up to them. You're right.
That would be where your own DDMs come in, you can select whatever you like. I think I know the answer to this, but it's mandated. I'm sure they're not funding.
After first year?
You probably have to pay for the Teaching Standards Gold, I'm sure.
Right, after the first year, the districts have to pick up the tab, and it's mandated.
And this would just be another, another layer on top of everything you've already talked about in terms of Foundations and whatnot. This is really a data collecting, you know, assessment throughout the year that I'm assuming everybody in Massachusetts will be using.
Yes.
And it'll be interesting to look at that data and see who's, you know, where everyone's at in terms of what systems they use.
If I can just point out, the Department of Ed- Elementary and Secondary Education has made a commitment to a program called EDWIN. And there's two elements to it, EDWIN Analytics, which looks at a lot of student data. But then there's this new one called EDWIN Teaching and Learning. And this discussion is really focusing on, on EDWIN Teaching and Learning. The department is committed to getting it up and going. We're in partnership with the Ohio State Department of Education, and the commissioner has released information, you know, that they'll be training. Essentially, the, the Commonwealth will fund the program for probably two years, but then schools will have to pick it up. And the estimate is it would probably cost anywhere from five to eight dollars per child to, to participate in that. So it's an integrated database, but it's also going to be tied, you know, to the Common Core standards. But it's just literally rolling out, and it's still, in my view, somewhat in development in terms of its implementation. But this is all connected to the vision that the current commissioner has for the schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And we seem to have lost our little Apple that was giving you the nice little overview slide, so. Jesse's seeing if he can reboot it and move on. But maybe we could move on to the next pieces of data and just share it, all right?
Okay, so.
I've asked the principals to talk about enrollment. I just want to say, I asked them to come and be prepared to talk about it, so that you would, you would have a- you would, you would have an overview. We have not made specific decisions about any class sizes, save one. At the Millville Elementary School, we currently have three fifth grade, and we only have thirty-six students moving up from fourth grade, so we're not going to continue with three sections of fifth grade. But there's, you know, questions and concerns at both schools, particularly around enrollment for incoming kindergarten. I think when I presented the enrollment data from NESDEC, there has been a decline in the birth rate, which manifests itself five years later with fewer children. Both principals are currently conducting their outreach in the community to determine children that will formally register to go to kindergarten next September. We've looked at the census data in both communities, we've done outreach through the census data, outreach through media and word of mouth, to try to get parents who have a child that's eligible to come to kindergarten next year, to come and pick up a packet, so that we can do that. That will not be finalized much, you know, earlier than the middle of March. It is a process in a small community of having to get the word out. Keep in mind that kindergarten is not a required, we're required to offer it, but parents are not required to send their child to kindergarten. And some parents, even though their child may be chronologically eligible for kindergarten, they will choose not to have their child go to kindergarten with their peer group. So there are a couple of variables, unlike variables for children beyond kindergarten that play into this. So I've asked both principals to kind of give an overview to where they see their particular enrollment at this point. And other than, other than the decision on fifth-grade teaching sections at Millville Elementary, we've made no, no decisions on staffing. But we are looking very closely at the elementary schools, and particularly the entering kindergarten classes at both Blackstone and at Millville. So who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Do you have a question first?
I'm sorry?
Just waving?
I'm drinking my coffee.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
At Millville for next year in kindergarten, we have reached out to twenty-five students on the census. There were two from last year who chose not to send their children, and then there are twenty-three from the census list that we had. So there's twenty-five we've reached out to. And then we've noticed five families who are not on our original list, who had come and picked up packets. So it's an ongoing process. We will not know, as you can imagine, even if people pick up the registration packets, sometimes they choose not to register their child, and sometimes the registrations are happening up to a week before school. So that's the kindergarten census information I have. In grade one for next year, we have twenty-five students in the regular education classroom, and then there's five students that we're looking at specialized instruction and creating, working together with how that's going to work out with special education. I think Dr. Hawkeye's going to talk in more detail about that, but it's twenty-five children in the regular ed classroom. Grade two, we have forty-six students.
Hold on, what was the first grade number again? I'm sorry, I missed it. Twenty?
Twenty-five regular education with five students-
Next year.
-in addition of specialized.
These are next-year numbers, so there are twenty-five children in kindergarten this year. But we also are working with five children that have specialized programs.
Okay, so we have thirty children that would be the target?
Just to be clear, we have twenty-five children that I would consider in the regular kindergarten, and then we have five children that are in and out of those kindergarten rooms-
Okay.
-because they have highly specialized IEPs. All right? And decisions have not been made on those five other, those children, because they're really dependent on their IEP. All right? And that's what Dr. Hawkeye will talk about when he's here at your next meeting. So it's twenty-five general ed students, some of them may have an IEP for some services. And then we have five children that are on individualized educational plans that have specialized, and that is, they're not spending the majority of their time in a regular education class at this point.
Nice question.
Sure.
For that incoming first grade, were there any, any kids that could have possibly gone to private kindergartens in the town that we were missing from the census the previous year that didn't come to us, or that we should worry about possibly-
Oh, you mean of the kindergarten, people picked up the kindergarten packets?
Right, it was like Dr. Davis was pointing out, they don't have to come to kindergarten.
They come and pick up the packets, and we don't always get information where they were before until, if they choose to come in for the screening, we get that information at that time.
But we could expect, right, I'm talking about the kindergarten moving up, the twenty-five-
Maybe landing back for first grade.
Oh, from current kindergarten.
Right.
Yes.
Is it possible that we could expect new enrollments for first grade that didn't attend kindergarten with us, or?
It could happen.
Right.
It's based on, now, what's the outreach been? I mean, obviously to the town clerk, but to, where else have we, who else have we talked to?
We have sent out letters to everyone on our census lists, informing them of where they can pick up the kindergarten packets, where information is located, and it's on the website. Our website has the information as well. And I know in my town, I asked MESSBA to reach out, which they have reached out as well. The preschool teachers also send information home, in case some of the parents who have a preschool might have a kindergartner coming in.
Okay.
So there's been different types of reaching out.
We've put it on our websites, Facebook as well.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. And certainly, it might have been trends. Last year, we don't know how many new first grade, because you're, that's a good question.
But it's probably unpredictable, I was just wondering.
It's absolutely unpredictable, but, but we would see a trend, maybe one or two, you know, that come back, or zero.
But one or two with this number could make a big difference.
Or zero.
That'll be the tipping point, you're right.
The other, the other variable is that some parents may opt to do homeschooling.
Mm-hmm.
All right? Or we could also get a request for school choice. So there are a lot of variables in play. That's why I said at the outset, looking at what we know, it doesn't look like we're going to be able to make any decision until probably mid-March. Let's give ourselves a good six weeks of beating the bushes, if you will, to try to identify all of the potential children that would possibly enter the Millville Elementary School, in terms of that. So, you know, the principals are doing the best they can, you know, to get that information out. Many families with young children, you know, they have common playgroups or sports or activities, and that's another informal way of kind of getting the word out. But the census data is currently being collected again, but we're working off the census data that's available currently in order to do, in order to do direct outreach. And it is direct.
For grade four right now?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at that. For grade four right now?
That's next.
It says forty-seven, right, for next year. There was an increase? Because I had forty-three down for grade three this year.
Yeah, it's been-
There were some movements.
Otherwise.
There's school choice.
Well, you know, just to reiterate that, you know, K-1 kids are, were probably born in oh-eight and oh-nine, which was the height of the Great Recession, so historically, as well as, you know, everything, I think across the country, you know, the birth rate is depressed, at least in that period, and I don't know whether it's rebounded or not. So that's probably not, it seems, it seems exceptionally low, but I mean, it's not completely, you know, beyond logic, I guess. And then the other thing is, is that I don't believe that there's an awful lot of home sales in either town. Probably very low inventory as well. So, and those are the things that typically help you refresh your enrollment by folks selling their homes and new, new families moving in. So, I mean, we're not alone in that. I believe that that's a-
I think almost every community is experiencing some decline in enrollment, with the exception of Milford at this point, in the Blackstone, in the Blackstone Valley. We had a superintendent's meeting in the Blackstone Valley, and that was one of the comments, people were all experiencing a decline at the kindergarten level. As I said, in Chapter Seventy, we have lost thirty-five children compared to October one of two thousand and twelve. We've lost thirty-five children in the Blackstone Millville Regional Schools compared to a year ago, October one.
And there are two sections in Millville of everything except fifth grade currently?
Correct.
There's potential for that to change, as well as, and there's five sections in Blackstone. Okay.
And again, just on school choice, you, the current, here's current school choice is to allow students in. The one exception to that is if we went over, we would not overcrowd a class. So it is based on available seats on school choice.
And is there, is there a way that school choice, you know, if a kindergartner moves into Blackstone, can they school choice to Millville because there's space there?
Again, school choice is between districts. Millville Elementary and Blackstone Elementary are part of the same district.
And there's no intra-
And we've had that discussion about current regional, the language in the current regional agreement requires that children in Blackstone at the elementary level, with the exception of children with special needs, or in the event of an emergency, must be educated in their respective buildings. So at this point, these numbers reflect that. And again, these numbers, you know, are volatile because of their small number. You're a little better in Blackstone because you're dealing with, and Carol will show you those numbers, once, when the N gets over a hundred, you know, the volatility isn't as great, so, but we are looking at it. Mrs. Desai, any more comments on this?
No, it's just, again, then it just bumps up. Grade two will be forty-six, grade three will have thirty students next year, grade four will have forty-seven, and fifth grade will have thirty-six students, as we project now.
I have one question about school choice. Is there, like, a formula for school choice, as if somebody wants to come in for school choice? I know the elementary school is, you know, we don't have a large enrollment of school choice, but is it, how, can you explain how it's decided between Millville and Blackstone in terms of the school choicing, or?
Generally, the school choicing, because those requests come into my office, they're usually for a specific school. In the event that we had a request for school choice and it would overload a class in Millville, I would offer the parent that they could school choice to Blackstone.
Okay.
All right? But they are technically choicing to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District.
Okay.
But very often, at the elementary level, obviously, if somebody's living on the line with Millville and Uxbridge, you know, they're, they're asking to come to Millville. But again, we don't have to honor that request if that would be a tipping point and create too large of a section to that. Because they're actually require, they're actually making application for school choice to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. But we would watch that very carefully in terms of that. But I just want to correct, most of our school choice in are really at middle and high school.
Right.
Right.
We've had a few at the elementary.
I had a few right before school started, actually.
Mrs. Desai, you know, the twins.
Well, no, the twins were already there, but I had something, some from Uxbridge, like, three or four students, I had almost six students the week before students started.
One of the families was former residents of town, and had moved to, out of town, and they were trying to move back. So they choiced in. And they may be regular students next year, because it was the intention of the family to relocate, get housing back in Millville. So their school choice currently, that doesn't mean next month, they could notify us that they found residents in Millville, and they would cease to be on the school choice.
The choice kids are in these numbers, though, right?
Yes, these are actual-
So how many, how many choice kids are in that?
I didn't-
I had two children who school choiced into my current grade two. And I also had, off the top of my head, I believe, four other children who school choiced in from Uxbridge.
Okay, so there's a half a dozen.
But they were in my current grades two and three, or something like that.
So by my count, that's two-hundred-and-nineteen children there now. How many, how many do we service in our preschool or our other services there? Do we have a-
The three and four-year-olds?
Substantially separated group there, as well as preschool?
The Millville, the Millville Elementary population, because our integrated preschool for both Blackstone and Millville is located there, so-
Right, so we have about sixty, sixty-five students in preschool.
And, okay, and that's a-
That includes everybody.
And is that like about a, is that like a, what's the split there? Because I know you have some, it's an integrated preschool, so we have some that are paying tuition, and then others, do we know how many are paying tuition in that, other sixteen?
Off the top of my head, I've-
Regulations require that fifty percent of the class be typical and atypical, so, you know, approximately-
About thirty.
Fifty percent, yeah, to do that. We can get you those numbers off X2 in terms of the school choice. But I just, school choice would always be based on the availability of spaces.
Yeah, that's always been the history.
We would not overload a class if we felt that number was as high as we wanted it to go. And trying to keep the sections, you know, at grades three, four, and five, you know, somewhere between twenty-two and twenty-five, so that would obviously, you know, mitigate when we, when we received a request. And at the lower grades, you know, trying to keep those, trying to keep those numbers down, you know, around, you know, eighteen to twenty-two. But again, you make a decision, and as Mrs. Desai said, somebody can come in the week before school opens, you know, and they're, they moved into town. So the fluidity, the fluidity of those numbers-
It's going to flow, the problem is that it's such a small sample size, it doesn't take too many to throw everything kind of, you know, if you, if two or three people show up here in the Blackstone doors, you can obviously spread that out, you know, small thing, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Sure. When you take a look at our kindergarten number, you'll, you'll see that there are eighty-one names on the census, thirty-three nonsens. And so what we did was, we looked over the past several years, and we took a look at the number of students on our census, and the number of students who actually registered, and we range anywhere from thirty-three percent to forty-one percent over the census numbers. So again, you know, it's, it's really something, it's kind of a wait and see. You know, I, I check at least weekly, and sometimes, you know, daily, just to see how many packets have been picked up. And it initially is, sometimes initially, you have a little bit of a rush, and then it really dies down. And even though we want the packets back by the end of February, it, it happens well after that. So looking at March might give us a better number, but I remember, you know, during, during the summer, we have people coming in, the first day of school. So again, it's just, it's really, it's really tricky to predict.
We also have some children that leave.
And we do have some children that leave.
It's not all in over the summer. Sometimes, sometimes parents move, so the fluidity is there. The census, according to Dr. Kennedy from NESDEC, again, you know, is, is one of the pieces of data, you know, that we really have to kind of rely on. The projections, as I indicated last time, it was in your packet. You know, there are too many other variables out there relative to our communities and their size, in terms of where we are. So both principals, I say, I have to say, are really, really using all of their tools to do the outreach, to get the word out. And again, packets have been picked up, and they're due back-
Need to in February.
Just before February vacation, as I recall, the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Fourteenth. And then we'll do follow-up again. The people who picked up a packet and didn't return it, they'll get, they'll get a phone call.
Now, these all, you have five sections each level?
I do. And that's right, we do continue to reach out, so there's, there's a follow-up letter, and then we make phone calls. So we really try to, try to keep a handle on, you know, where we're at number-wise. And again, you can see that it's, we're looking at one-hundred-and-three students at grade one. And again, with those, the following numbers that you're looking at, grade one through five are not inflated. It's actually just taking the number that's currently in the, in the section this year and just moving it to the next grade level. So we're at one-hundred-and-three for grade one, one-hundred-and-three for grade two, eighty-nine for grade three, one-hundred-and-two for grade four, and one-hundred-and-sixteen for grade five.
Okay. Are there any other questions on enrollment? Otherwise, if the pleasure of the committee, well, Mrs. Desai and Mrs. Brown are here, we probably can answer questions. Maybe if we start with the Millville budget, if there are any questions on the budget that you had in your packet, or got electronically. Again, no, no staff have been removed from the, from the budget, but I do have the discussion that that fifth grade will go from three sections to two. That will be an adjustment.
But it's still in the budget as of this printing?
Right, the printout will show that the full faculty as it, as it exists currently.
Okay.
All right. Anybody with questions to Mrs. Desai? Turn to Mrs. Brown. I'm getting the hang of this. I call it the complex, but when you get budgets, I always have to look at the top and do JFK is the lower school, and AFM is the upper school. I've got it down, but I never know, other than the fact that my principals work half-time in each building, so. We're not paying Mrs. Brown this awfully low salary, we're actually, we'd pick her up on the next set of printouts. Very confusing. Any questions on the respective budget? Any questions on the respective budget?
Just, my question would be like, if, if there's any, any points that you would like us to look at, or that, you know, that just as far as the change in programs, now we know that the Millville has dropped, you know, the fifth grade is, is aging out. I mean, it doesn't look like there's an awful lot of change, I mean, for sure, obviously things are populated correctly this year, and, but I mean, there isn't much of a variance. Looks like the, I look at Millville, it's up about fifty K over last year, you know, taking a quick look at that, so I don't know, is there anything, is there anything that you'd point out? I mean, is, so, all the negotiated contractual obligations are in here, it's not, it's not a negotiation here?
Well, it is for the support staff, so, you know, there are, there are some fluidity with those numbers. Again, if you've looked over the budgets, one of the big things that's in, in all of the budgets, you know, is accounting for those substitutes for these teacher workshops that are directly tied to the literacy program.
Right.
All right? So, when I, when I look at the budget in, in terms, in terms of staff development, you know, adding, adding those teacher embedded days where the consultants come in and we bring in a substitute, there's money in those budgets for that.
Has there been any review of, I always look at counselors, you know?
Sorry?
Any review of counseling staffing? What do you have now for, in each building? Nursing, you know, you know, there's, how many, how many, how many are in JFK?
We have a total of five nurses for the district.
I'm, I'm just talking about these, these two buildings.
So, there's one, one in each assigned, and then there's one nurse that works amongst the, the five buildings, but there's one permanent at JFK FM, and then there's a nurse that floats amongst the, amongst the schools.
Okay.
We have had a discussion at the leadership team meeting about the deployment of counselors in terms of social workers, adjustment counselors, and guidance counselors, in terms of looking at, you know, the fluidity that we need in order to meet the needs, as, you know, we have to think, we can't think any longer about a building having staff as much as the district having staff to meet the needs of the students. And so, we've had that discussion at the leadership team meeting, even though embedded in this budget is not, not any, there's no substantial change, but the principles, we have been discussing this issue of being able to look at the deployment of staff, and also having discussions about if we see the need for a certain type of intervention, you know, how then can we deploy the staff? Because I strongly suggest we can no longer have a model that talks about people anchored to a building. If the need, you know, happens, we need to be able to move some of the counseling staff to address those needs in, in terms of providing intervention. So, we've had those discussions, but we've not redeployed any staff. Principals that built the budget last year, there were additional staff people, adjustment counselors hired in the district, and some reorganization between guidance and adjustment counselors and school psychologists at this point. So, we've had that discussion, and I think, you know, the feel is that we have the right number, we obviously feel that we may have to deploy them differently.
Okay. Anything else from the committee? Questions, comments?
I, I have one question, and it's not directly related to the budget, so, we could even talk about it later, but just based on all the new literacy initiatives, the foundations, and the Teachers for Teachers, I'm curious on your opinions on how it aligns with our current report card. So, like I said, I know it's not a budget question, but just to put that out there, just because it's so particular on, on some lines, I'm, and again, we can talk about it in the future, but have you gotten any feedback from teachers in regards to that?
We hear a lot of report card issues.
And we've actually already had some discussions, so we are certainly well aware that we need to take a look at that report card and revamp it because-
Okay.
We need, we need to make it a better tool, absolutely. So, the conversations have already started.
Started, okay.
Oh, absolutely. Now, it's a matter of making a plan and, and seeing how, how we need to address it, but absolutely.
And taking the time and doing it systematically and right, so we want to also look at what, you know, instead of re-renting the wheel, look at what other districts have done, and then pick and choose what matches our needs, you know, we, we doing the whole thing, but yes, the report card is an issue.
Okay, good, thank you.
I do want to mention, because I, I think Mrs. Desai and Mrs. Brown have worked very hard to, to coordinate the implementation of the literacy program and to the point of making sure that, you know, in some cases, we actually have staff work between the buildings, that it's not a rollout at a specific building, but next year in the, in the PD contract that's been proposed, based on our needs, you know, we're going to actually, you'll hear me in a minute, say we can save some money because by, by deploying teachers coming over from Millville or teachers from Blackstone going to Millville, we're only paying the one day for the consultant and being able to pick up, you know, the, the teachers at that grade level. So, that's been, I think, something that's been an unintended consequence. People get along and they are interested in having those discussions, you know, having seven kindergarten teachers working with the consultant rather than having the consultant work one day with five and then next week work with two, you know? And that's, that's been a byproduct of the work this year, so appreciate that. Any other questions? If not, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, it was great.
Thank you very much.
And Carol, you were the first one through the walls, now everyone else has to go through roof projects, so you're going to be the consultant for everybody in the district.
If you have any questions about your roofs, I can probably help.
You just opened a really-
No, I do, I do have to say that, that it was, um-
I'll be calling her a lot.
No, it was really, I have a binder, I have a binder, but it was really a matter of everyone working together. The teachers were incredibly supportive, and we really tried to make it more of a celebration. So, it went fairly smoothly.
I, I loved the, the reading-
Raising the roof?
Raising the roof.
Great.
And we did beat the contractors, I said that, that was, that was one contest, I was kind of hoping to lose, that the roof would be done before we finished reading all those books, but no, we, we managed to beat them.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next budget is to talk to you about the technology budget, and, you know, Mr. Buckley emailed me and asked me some questions, and I think it's worthy that I share with the entire committee. In working on this year's technology budget, I had to rely on Mr. Tupin, who's our network administrator, and also with Brad Monroe to kind of take a look at, you know, our, our staffing and our purchases, both for hardware and software in terms of what it is. The, the approach here is to continue our commitment to our technology services in the, in the Blackstone-Millville schools. There are no new major initiatives in this budget, and the reason for that is, you can't buy equipment without training staff. Our technology plan that we have to file with the state is really all about counting up the equipment. Without an assistant superintendent, you know, with me as the interim superintendent, there is, there is no plan. That's not to say that I don't think there are some things that we need to move forward on, but I would be less than honest with you if I said going out and buying fifty iPads would make sense. Without a plan to train the teachers, you're just buying equipment. So, my charge to, to Mr. Tupin and also to Mr. Monroe was really to go back and look at the system. We want to continue our commitment to the system, we don't obviously want to fall backwards in any way, so we have some upgrades in here for software that have been put off that need to occur in the, in order to move the system forward. You know, Windows seven licenses, we've been running on a, on a, soon-to-be-not-supported platform on Windows, and we need to, we need to do this upgrade in the Microsoft Office as well. So, those are, those are, I wouldn't call them initiatives as much as they're just your continued commitment to have those tools available to our staff and our students in, in moving forward, you know, with the, with the budget.
That's, that's district-wide, Perry.
I'm sorry?
That's district-wide.
Correct, that's, that's a backbone on the, on the server, but everybody benefits by having that available. If you've looked at the budget, and certainly in looking at a number of, of site licenses for various products that we use at the various schools, they're noted in the detail in terms of putting that in. We're continuing our membership in the, in the VHS Collaborative, which provides us an opportunity for students at both middle and high school to take online courses. That program is always fully subscribed, and it's a good benefit for the, for the district. We're not increasing any of our technology support people in the, in the budget in terms of the people that are deployed to manage and run the network and respond to teachers' issues relative to the, to the various pieces of equipment in the various classrooms in schools. And then on the very last, you know, we are, you know, going to, going to continue to keep current in terms of our hardware in the schools. So, there's money in for replacement costs, LCD projectors, the middle school was one of the first because of the money, it's ten years old, and some of that will inevitably need to be replaced. And when I use, when Mr. Tupin and I talked about replacement, we have to have that money in there, but the replacement's going to be based on, you know, what is going, you know, it's, I, I don't want to mislead anybody, it says middle school, you know, replacement, but honestly, if something were to go at the high school or something were to go at Millville, we would deploy that money, you know, where it's needed to, to keep that classroom with the appropriate LCD smartboard configuration, as well as replacing some printers and some of the other elements that we need. So, the entire budget, if you'll notice, if we went to the bottom line, is down by seventy-one thousand, and I, you know, have to be honest, we're, we're committed to the system and we're meeting our needs, but there isn't an initiative in here. And I, and I would tell you very honestly, again, it's not there because just telling you I wanted to buy something without a plan to provide professional development or somebody to lead it, you know, we would, we would simply have a lot of boxes in the room for most of the year. So, I think this is a grounded technology budget, but if there are any questions-
It's a good point, because over the next three years, there might be other things with going along with the library, meet information specialists, that, that seventy-one thousand that we save in this year, we might cost us a hundred grand over the next two years beyond that, so it, it, it's a good point.
Any questions on the techno-
I have a few.
Sure, okay.
On, on the first page, I notice in the, I guess it's the salary information management, we have a full-time person, and is that another full-time person? Because there's quite a delta there in the salaries.
The salary for Elizabeth Gans, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and then the, and the other one, Leslie Toll.
Okay, the, we, yeah, we, Elizabeth is a, a full-time, twelve-month support person. She does all of our district input, she handles our SIMs database, our EPIMs database, and does all of the reporting to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, you know, she's our data person for that. Leslie Toll is a halftime position, twenty hours a week, she's our data analyst, she works with the staff, she is the one that manipulates all of the MCAS data when that becomes available, and she inputs the testing that's done at the elementary schools, the SRI and the other tests, because I just got her report.
Hi, Excel?
The SMI and the SR, M-I-N-R-I?
Yes, M-I-N-R-I, the, the elementary reading and math assessments, and she works with the, the four teachers that are on the data team, and she is a support person, so she's considered a data analyst for that. Brad Monroe-
Will we back up? So, she's not an FTE?
She's a half, point five, point five.
So, so she, and she was funded for the Race to the Top originally, so that must have, that's all gone now?
That's all gone, yes, yeah.
So, okay.
You're correct, that's a point five, twenty-hour-a-week position. Mr. Monroe has been employed since his retirement from the district to provide support, some of that was funded under, under the Race to the Top money. He was given a contract for a couple of years, and now his salary, all of his salary needs to come into this line item, all right? I can attest to his value, he's been pursuing our E rates. And he just notified me today that, that we were approved for forty-eight percent reimbursement on our telephones, and I can only tell you how much time and effort he's spent chasing that down. He's tenacious to do that. But previously, I believe, in past budgets, that was, that was another part of the budget at about twenty thousand, and then the other piece came out of the Race to the Top funds.
He's pretty much, just by that, forty-eight percent reimbursement, he's pretty much paid more than his salary, and it's one of the most arcane and difficult processes you could ever imagine.
Well, let's be able to tie some real dollars to that, though, so we can, so when the question is asked, why are we funding this now through our budget that used to be granted?
Right.
We can show that value, because I agree, I mean, we've talked about Dr. Fitzpatrick and what he does with grant writing and everything else, you know, if this is that kind of investment, we should make sure that people understand that.
The other one, the other one is the, is the work that we have in the technology budget with French River for our internet as well.
What was that, I'm sorry?
The, the internet provider, is we, we purchase that through the French River Collaborative, and we also get E rate reimbursement on that. So, that also requires, requires tabulation and, and work, and we, we do get that credit on the bill, all right? Any other questions?
And then, like, on, on the next page, all those, I know a lot of these are renewals, and a lot of them are bought on district license or-
Correct.
-site licenses, but like, before we get too far into this, I'd like to say that whomever the assistant superintendent becomes, that they have some input before this money is spent.
Oh.
Because although some of the stuff we'd say, okay, we need to do this, or maybe there's, I, I really, we've been after this for a couple of years now, is really like, okay, what's the big picture?
Mm-hmm.
Where are we going? Are we going iPads? Are we going laptops? You know, how is this tied out to Park and the Common Core, if the Common Core exists? But, you know, I, I just don't want to, we've had a lot of false starts, and you're absolutely right when it comes to the state, they basically just want to see numbers. How many PCs do you have? How many laptops do you have? How many tablets do you have? Oh, thank you very much, and they roll that up, and away you go. And you can check off the box when you do your E rate, saying, yep, I have an approved tech plan, but the tech plan doesn't say anything. So, if the tech plan doesn't say anything, it's probably not, you know, worth much, and so, I, I would like, just like, and part of that, if you read the specs from, from DC, it says there should be a stakeholder, a group of stakeholders, not only the tech director, not only assistant superintendent, but also like members from the community, as well as staff, and, you know, a general, like a team that's kind of like reviewing all this stuff. And I'd like to see us, you know, get there, I mean, not today, but certainly in fiscal fifteen, so.
The only thing is, I, I don't disagree with you that, you know, Mr. Tupin's put these together, and when the new leadership team comes on board, that, that it would be reviewed. The only thing that I, they were deferred for whatever reason, was the Microsoft Office update and the Windows update, we're just-
Yeah, my only concern with the, with the, with the Microsoft Word, Office update and its fine, is just that, you know, do we make sure that we have machines that will run the new, the new software? Because in the ten years, obviously, things have changed, so.
Right.
And, you know, we, we are a Google Apps district, so a lot of those, that functionality is, I gotta get my plug in for Google, you know?
I, I have full confidence that, you know, Mr. Tupin, but, you know, we are, we are running on a piece of software right now that's not supported, that scares me.
XP, yeah, but I think they're going to have to extend it because there's, there's hundreds of sites, anyway. I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to-
We are wholly dependent on running, and when you, anyway, but it was deferred, and it really should not be deferred, and, and we'll obviously make decisions, you know, based on that, all right? Any other questions on technology? Okay. Moving to the next one, which is professional development. As I said to you when we finished up, I did meet, I did meet with Mrs. Desai and Mrs. Brown late Fri- Friday afternoon, and they had redone the, the contract with the Teachers for Teachers. We are going to save about twelve thousand dollars because of combining, using the consultants. There's no reason to have consultants running to both schools when we can ask people to drive over and have the consultant come. The audience- The audience is, is small enough in, in terms of that. The one, the one thing on the commitment here is that this, this group that we're working with is looking for us to sign a contract to do this work. And we don't have to sign it immediately, but obviously, they are reserving and holding dates for us for next year. So I really would need a consensus from the committee, you know, that, that this is a major commitment. And when I came, you know, I found out about this commitment and we had to find the funds and put it together and I reminded the committee, this is a minimum of a three-year commitment to this effort, all right? So I just kind of need, if I can, Mr. Chairman, is it, this is a strong priority for the committee?
Do you need a motion?
I don't think I need a motion because it really should be part of your budget process. I mean, there's always, there's always an out in the, in doing contracts, that if you don't get the appropriated funds, you can't be held to the contract within certain limits. But I, I do feel, I do feel the, the company involved has invested in us and if people don't object, I would just as soon sign that contract as a commitment to do it. And I think the teachers, as you've heard from the principals, have really bought onto this and it's probably one of the most significant things the district has done in a decade.
How long, how long is the contract?
It would be a one-year.
One-year renewable.
Right, well, yeah, it's basically a July 1st to June 30th next year. It would cover the summer dates, but that's my only concern, if we kind of hold them off and then somebody comes along and wants dates in the summer.
And they, I'm familiar with the company and I know they fill up very quickly.
Very quickly, very quickly.
And I think we've already committed to it and we can't go back, we can't stand still. We have to keep moving forward.
I think beyond the teacher's commitment, the kids are committed to it and it's just, we've got nothing but amazing feedbacks.
Plus, we, we have to see this for a number of years. We can't do something for a year and then throw it away.
No, no.
Yeah, let's.
Three years, we, three years we say, hey, this isn't working.
Since I'm taking the minutes tonight, I will reflect that we had this discussion, so, but no, I don't, I don't need a motion, Mr. Chairman. So in reality, the, again, the professional development budget looks, if you do the bottom line, it's about $20,000 less. Again, I'm only cautioning, without somebody to have done some planning, you know, for PD, you know, that, that this is our commitment in moving forward. I just remind you that we did put 9,000 in the high school budget for the NEASC accreditation and that's part of the high school budget, but that really is for professional development for NEASC.
What does the professional development look like at the middle school? Is that?
In, in terms of, he's got money in his budget for PD.
Okay.
Right. This is more district-wide PD.
Okay.
All right. But every, every school budget had money for professional development. But again, there aren't any major new initiatives, you know.
I didn't know if the focus was, with the literacy being in the elementary schools, if there was a push to, to support it at, at the middle school level.
I believe Mr. Cameron, when he was here, indicated, you know, that certainly, as this program is now rolling out, that he would like his sixth grade reading teachers, we had that discussion at the leadership team meeting, to spend some time with the fifth grade teachers and, and learn a little bit more about it. And again, the flexibility on that contract, there are two reading teachers at sixth grade, so popping them into some workshops, I don't think would be a problem.
Okay.
To do that. So those are, those are the budgets that I had for you tonight to kind of review. If you need any additional information, feel free to email me and I'll be glad to get additional information. The only other item under the budget is the Chapter 70. And in your packet is a breakdown of the, of the governor's budget for Chapter 70. And Mr. Buckley and I will meet and spend a little bit more time going over the, the Chapter 70 numbers, but in essence, as I said the last meeting last week, the minimum contribution that we're getting is $25 per student. We're getting an additional $46,975 of new money from the, from the Chapter 70 formula. And the required net school spending requirement change is $149,722, all right? At this point. And then I need to go back, when the cherry sheets are published, to see the breakdown by town, by Millville and Blackstone, because there's always money they give you and then there's always money they take away. And it's the takeaway money that I don't have finalized yet, specifically losing money for students in school choice.
I'm maybe a half a step, a step ahead of you, but we'll kind of hold off, but, well, a key thing is, you know, we're looking at, is that I started to do the straw horse back page. And one thing you have to realize is that there's a significant amount of non-recurring funds revenue that went in to balance that budget to the tune of, you know, what we, what we slapped in there from E and D, circuit breaker and the like. And I noticed in some of the, some of the presentation that you've given us is that, you know, you've already done the offsets on the, on the, on the, on the circuit breaker, so that's going to make things a little differently, different. But, you know, if you look at that and then a, a very disturbing trend is we have about a, a net offset of about minus 305 in the school choice. We have approximately 120 or 130 coming in according, according to the cherry sheet.
Oh, really?
And going out is almost a half a million.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So the offset there is three, minus 305.
Yes.
So that's very troubling. Last year, we had about a 244 negative where you had to apply on the back page.
Going out, Mike, does that include BBT, AGI?
No.
No.
These are strictly children that are going public to public, doesn't include AGI, Tri-County.
It's important to let the people know that.
No, good point. So these are children, and last year, they produced a report, and it was around this time of the year, that actually showed you where they were going.
Yes.
And at what grade level.
Yes.
That would be an interesting exercise.
Do we have a number of kids? We have dollars. How many kids is that?
We have, by our count, we have 78 out and 28 in. So we have a delta of 50.
Yeah, that's about right.
But I, we're trying to get that data to see, you know, the, the students are out, particularly at what grade level and what communities.
So it would be, it would be too premature, it would be, it would be premature now to actually say, this is what the back, back page looks like, because I have to sync with Dr. Davis to say, okay, this is where this money now flows, because a lot of that stuff was just kind of piled on the back end.
Mm-hmm.
A couple of things to note that, you know, Medicare reimbursements, I don't know how they're running. And I know I won't be a popular person on this, but we really have to get our arms around, really, how much money do we really collect from the fees? And where are those offsets?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Many districts, and I know we're not, and I am hesitant to say, but many districts have really said, okay, you want these type of programs, we can't afford to pay for them under net school spending. You know, we can't afford to do it within the budget. So I think we have to be really prudent in that, not just arbitrarily say, okay, we're going to charge $180 a sport. Okay, is that money actually going into the program? And, you know, how much, what, what's the delta is from what we've invested and what will come out? Because, you know, that's, it's, it's just a reality.
We had a nice sheet last year, I remember seeing that.
Yeah.
Around the actual cost of a sport.
Right, yeah.
There was a grid, there was, for football, this is how many players we had and what we have to pay out and what we collect and what the district pays. And it, and it was for every single sport. And that, but that's, that's real, that's real dollars, you know?
Well, you know, I'm, I was never a fan of sports fees or, or user fees or anything like that, but in the harsh reality that is 2014, and I look at, and I talk to other districts and I find out that it's pretty much standard, that it's, it's nice to have a team, it's nice to have a program, but there's a fee associated with it and it needs to be somewhat closer to revenue neutral than it is in what we have now, so. But next week, we're going to get together, so.
Okay, good.
Next time we get together, we'll have a, we'll have the first shot at the back page.
Mike, could you also do a, if you can, just an analysis of what, per pupil, us compared to 10 others around? Because I think that's important to have, too, in terms of what.
Actually, some interesting information on, on the website that, of, when you compare the, the districts that wind up in the DART, the, you know, and when you, when you compare some of those, it gets you out of the valley a little bit, but it gets you to more, you know, the characteristics are more, are closer aligned. So there are some valley towns that are in there, like I believe Northbridge is one of our compadres, but, you know, you get, you get a different space.
Sure.
So, sure.
Yeah, I can, I can just share with the committee, I met with Mr. Agit, the financial advisor, with Donna Scungio yesterday, and we went through the recap numbers as of the end of December to do that and what we're tracking in, in terms of that. The, the offset for athletic fees was 65,000 and as of the end of December, we're at 47,536. So it looks like we're tracking to that 65, because we'll be going into the spring season.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
Is that money that has actually been collected?
Correct.
Or is there any money due?
No, no, that's the money.
So that doesn't include anything that hasn't been paid?
Correct. This is money collected and it's, it's basically fall and winter sport. And then we have one more season to go, so it's reasonable at 47 that we'll hit the 65, all right? You asked about the Medicaid, you, you took a $60,000 hit on that and so far to date, we've collected only $10,493. The Medicaid has been, has been, oh, a difficult navigation to do that. But I also uncovered, when I was reviewing the funding, some of you may recall, we did the health insurance for retirees. And those retirees that went on had to go on Medicare.
Medicare, right.
Charges have been made against the Medicaid money for the, for the penalty fee we had to pay.
Oh, okay.
And I'm stopping that.
Okay.
That shouldn't be charged against the Medicaid money.
Oh.
It should be charged against the health insurance budget. We have to pay it.
Yeah.
Every month and it's about $2,300 a month that we have to pay for that, which is a lot of money, but we save more money by moving people off of our health insurance to Medicare.
Gets people to that, yeah.
But, you know, when I was auditing and looking at that, I said, no, just because they're, just because both funds come from social security, no, no, they're, they're really not offsets.
Okay.
So, you know, at this point.
That number might look a little bit better.
That, that number will look better.
Okay.
Better in terms of where we are. And then the, the circuit breaker number, we have 504,000, we took 300 against it, but we're going to pretty much take the rest of that balance to balance this year.
Balance this year.
In terms, in terms of where, in terms of where we are. The other big one is the one that we're going to talk about at the next meeting, is our extended day program is currently running, 21,000 in the red as of the end of December, in terms of that, so.
December.
I, I, yes. I just got it, yes, late yesterday afternoon, so, yes. If I can, Mr. Chairman, a couple of late additions, if I can.
Sure.
The Massachusetts School Building Authority voted at its meeting on the 29th to approve the Millville Elementary roof project at the reimbursement rate of 57.74. So we've crossed the first hurdle, we're approved, and then obviously, you have a special town meeting in Millville coming up and then the vote. But the project, you know, has been approved by MSBA. That's good news. The high school roof, the designer and asbestos people and the engineers are doing their due diligence. This little thing called Snow, has had, forced us to reschedule that three times, but they were able to get up on the roof and spend over three hours doing their investigation and laying it out. And I talked with Maury Wolf, the architect that's working with us on the project, and the middle school roof project is going forward in, in terms of design. We don't have a date yet to go out to bid, but we are pushing to be able to get that out to bid this spring at this point, okay? That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Subcommittee reports, is there anything new on here that we didn't talk about last week? Okay.
Superintendent, we did meet, we had our first meeting last week with the entire, I think we have a great group. We're meeting again tomorrow and hopefully scheduling interviews from now on. We may, may be a meeting behind for the February 13th, I think it was, that we wanted to bring, or that we wanted the committee to, the search committee to bring it to us. We have some tentative dates that we're going to reach out to, to the candidates for, for interviews, once we decide who those candidates are. If they can't fall into those, those slots, we might be hitting a wall.
And what's the number you're going to present to us?
I believe it's three to five.
Okay. Why is there a four?
Three to five.
Okay. Okay. Great. Anything else from subcommittee? Okay, public forum. Don't leave.
Put me a code sign.
This is your time. You guys are good?
Good, yeah.
Thank you.
Committee forum.
Nothing new, sorry.
Uh, nothing much, but just to let people know that I, nomination papers are available in both towns for the upcoming election, which is, the election is the first Monday in April, and papers are available in both town clerks. And I have decided to seek us another term, so just want folks to know that I'm going to seek another term and I hope I'll encounter your support, so that's about it.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Actually, we do have something.
Oh.
We're going to give a shout out. We've been notified that we have some little friends watching tonight, so we want to say hi to our friends from Blackstone that are watching live and thanks for.
Watching.
Watching.
And our, and our, and our big friends.
Yes, the, the large public crowd that we have.
Okay. Oh, even at home, I'm sure there's, hopefully there's more.
Right.
Little ones watching, but also some.
It's, it's nice when the little ones watch. It's educational TV at its best.
That's right.
Maybe we can work on getting them here next time for public forum.
Could ask some good questions.
That'd be great.
You know, that's one thing, now, circle back to me. One thing we haven't done this year, and we've talked about doing, getting the kids in here, so, we need to get our, our customers in front of us, so.
Wait, you're going to have the band here next meeting?
With instruments?
If you'd like, I'm sure they would be happy to perform.
We do the virtual professional.
The jackets have been ordered, so the members of the band want to come. We need to recognize them for their competition win this fall and I've talked to Mr. Bebo and they will be here at our next meeting to be recognized and honored.
That's great.
For that.
Can I, can I cycle back, see, you know?
Sure, we can cycle back as many times as we like.
Um, good you.
The Empty Bowl Project is Wednesday, the 12th.
Yeah, 12th, 2/12th, right.
And tickets are available, I think it's a whole seven bucks and it's a great cause and the benefits, it benefits some of our less fortunate folks and it's always a pretty good, good time and the kids really put a lot of effort into it. Now, are we, are we meeting the 13th?
Yes.
I believe, yeah.
Yeah, we're meeting the Thursday, that's Wednesday.
Any chance of moving it back to the 13th and tying it out that night and then maybe going to.
Backing up a night?
Having the meeting right there at the high school? Well, I'm getting a no. Okay, I'm sorry.
Well.
Well, we talked about that last time.
But, right now, we have tentative meetings scheduled for.
Oh, you guys are being, okay, I'll, I'll pass. Well, probably, I'll, I'll just go to soup without you, and I'll have soup without you guys. And, yeah, I'm, I'm done.
Sure.
I have another one, but I'm going to let go.
Okay. And then just to reiterate to the people at home and the little ones and the big ones at home, we are going to start advertising and publicizing our tours of the building. It'll be the first two Saturdays in March. The first Saturday in March will be the elementary schools and I'm thinking it's going to be 10 to 12. Does anyone object to those hours?
Uh, you, you, well, depending on how many you have, but you may want to go like, say, Well, depending on how many you have, but you may wanna go, like, say, nine to twelve, just in case, you know, folks have questions or whatever, and then, it's just to move them along.
Alright, and then the following Saturday, we'll be doing the middle school and the high school. So, we hope there's people in the public that will come along and take a tour of the schools that haven't been in for a while. And it'll tie in nicely to our presentations when we have the public hearing in March, when we present our budget, so. We're gonna continue with the budget, and, you know, I was gonna say nickel and dime, we're not nickel and dime in anything. We're gonna work through things and meet the needs of our customers. So, with that, if anybody has.
One other thing.
That's twice.
Okay, what's the deal, we want to take this on the road.
Oh, great, that's a good point.
Yeah, so, I mean, what do we want to do?
So, we could have, wherever we go, we can have the kids from that building.
Absolutely.
I think, I think we gotta get to Millville, the second one in February. The, what is it? Second meeting in February.
That's like the twenty-seventh, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then maybe one more time in March.
Complex, yeah.
And then we do one later in the high school.
Yeah. Sorry, try to get the high school for the thirteenth.
Well, I mean, with that, with that, we could pick our second meeting, our second meeting every month, to a different location. We just go to each, each building, if people are okay with that.
Well, it may tie out to what we had tried to look at, you know, beginning of this year, we didn't get there, like, you know, maybe that second meeting is more, you know, you know, you have more visitors or more topics like that.
Worked out to have things.
Where like, you know, the first meeting is the business of the district, and you kind of get that out there.
We just gotta check with Jesse, make sure there's no technological.
We did check with him, he can, he can travel with us.
He's, okay, he's mobile.
I'll give the words, we have the technology, so.
Right now, we do.
Right now.
It's all.
Pay those license fees, so we can make sure. The next couple of weeks.
Okay, so, with that said, if anyone wants to make a motion to adjourn?
See, do you have one more thing?
No, I'm good.
I make a motion to adjourn, so I can watch the rest of Boone's game.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Wagner, seconded by Mr. Tringali. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, so I'm gonna say an aye?
Aye.
What's happening out with Tom down in the Bahamas?